Good morning. Welcome to this very special meeting, Board of Supervisors, Calverus County, for May 2nd, 2016. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Now, could you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I would like to start off this morning, since today is one of those days that is pretty challenging for, I think, the community and the board, but also very exciting. And I'd like to start off with a moment of silence for late Sheriff Kuntz. We're honoring him today with, hopefully, with his replacement, and I think that it's fitting that we pay him homage. Do I have any board announcements?
Mr. Chair, this morning before we opened session, we were handed some documentation regarding an agenda item for tomorrow. I would request the board take notice of that and maybe address that at tomorrow's special meeting and have that individual present.
Okay. I'm trying to figure out what that is exactly.
It's documentation provided by Mr. Todd Barr.
Okay. All right. Okay. Take a poll on the board. How do you feel about that?
I'm working.
Do you want him to present?
I want him to present. Apparently, this documentation regards his qualification for the position being interviewed.
If I may, the applications were reviewed for the building official. The qualified candidates that met the minimum qualifications were put forward, and I do not believe that Mr. Barr met those qualifications, and that was why he was not put forward.
I think counsel needs to talk.
Well, quite honestly, I don't know what you're talking about because I don't have a copy of it, so I haven't been able to review it. So, what I would recommend, so we don't delay today, a copy of that be provided to me into my office. We will review it, and then we will issue an opinion later today.
I have one for you.
Thank you.
So, we can do the same thing tomorrow as we can do today?
Sure.
Okay. Any other announcements from the board? Counsel?
I do have an announcement. As everyone knows, the board directed my office to bring back an urgency ordinance for consideration at tomorrow's special meeting. The board at the end of the last regular meeting directed me to work with Supervisor Ponti and Chair Edson, as well as department heads and others, to modify the urgency ordinance to address some of the concerns that have been brought up through all of the public sessions. We have had a meeting. My office has been working tirelessly to try and update the urgency ordinance based on those meetings, but because we are here today, I am not going to be able to finish the urgency ordinance to have it posted in order to meet the 24-hour notice requirements under the Brown Act to consider it tomorrow. So, I am asking that the board pick an alternative day this week so that I can finalize the urgency ordinance, have it posted. It has to be 24 hours before the special meeting, and then have it heard on a different day.
Do you have a particular day this week that would work better for you, your office?
For my office, I know that I have obligations on Thursday morning. I know that there were some concerns of other days. Thursday would probably be best, but if we could do it at 1:00, that would be best for my office. Then that would allow us until Wednesday at 1:00 to finalize it and have it posted.
How about next Monday morning?
No, I can't do it Monday.
Yeah, Thursday, I'm unavailable.
Let's do it Tuesday.
I'm good with next.
A week from tomorrow?
The alternative would be Friday, if there's four board members available on Friday. I had originally anticipated being in Sacramento regarding implementation of MRSA, but if the board would like...
Could I be back by then?
I can cancel that.
Friday would work for me because I got a judge.
I'm available Friday.
Yeah, I have two appointments on next Friday.
No, it would be this Friday.
I mean, this Friday.
Just so, again, the board knows, my office and planning was intending to be in Sacramento to attend a conference about implementation of MRSA, which goes hand-in-hand with its medical marijuana topic and how it's implemented at the state level, but we can cancel that if that's the only day available.
Why don't we start out Tuesday morning, then? If Monday's a problem.
Yeah, why don't we just move the other regular board agenda items back?
So, if I could just add that Tuesday at our regular meeting is the government center frog jump. We have outside people who are coming. There's a lot of plans that are in place for that day.
Well, we can still do the frog jump.
Okay, just letting you know.
Right?
Yeah.
Since all of us can be here on next Tuesday.
I've already got it scheduled.
So, just so I'm clear, the board direction would be to actually have the urgency ordinance. I suspect it will take a significant amount of time. Is it the intention of the board to just have the urgency ordinance on the agenda for next Tuesday, and then all of the other items that were intended to be on Tuesday to be heard on a special meeting later in the week? Or were you intending to try and get to all of that on the same day as well?
Counsel, will your office be prepared on Wednesday?
Wednesday of this week?
This Wednesday of this week.
We could certainly try. Again, it would have to be posted by... So, if we did Wednesday at 1:00, we would have until tomorrow at 1:00 to finish it. It's ambitious, but we can certainly attempt that.
I can't do it until the evening.
I like Tuesday.
We can work on that. Let's do Tuesday.
The next board meeting Tuesday?
Yeah.
Let's, you know...
And I don't want to push anything out. We can work our regular agenda, and then if we have to push something out off our regular agenda, we can do that.
Okay. I'm okay for Tuesday the 10th. I think it's going to be a very long, with lots of activity going on, so perhaps the board could tentatively schedule the 17th as an overflow meeting, just to make ourselves available if we need to.
Can we put the marijuana thing on first? I just had it.
I will be having town on 17th, fortunately, for two days.
Well, we'll figure, if we have to, we'll figure another date for whatever's left over. Is that all right with everybody?
Agreeable.
All right, that's fine.
Okay. The 10th.
And then we'll start at 9, the marijuana ordinance.
After public comment, yeah. We'll have the urgency ordinance, the first item, on the agenda if that's...
And that is on the 10th?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Any other comments from the board?
So, tomorrow's meeting, we still have our special meeting from 9 until noon for our interviews with the building official.
Correct.
Okay.
Is it a special meeting or a closed session?
It's a special meeting, closed session.
Okay. All right. So, we'll move on to public comment. Public comment is any item of interest to the public that is within subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas, may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency of the board of supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the regular agenda. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued at the conclusion of the consent agenda in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. So, you have three minutes this morning for public comments. Public comments, please.
Good morning, board. Joe Kelly from the abandoned area of District 1. Last planning commission meeting last week, during a discussion of votes, Mr. Alred, a planning commissioner, made numerous comments about being pressured about his vote. Do you folks know anything about that? Were any of you involved in that pressuring of him? Were any other planning commissioners involved in pressuring of him? I think you need to do an investigation of it and come up with an answer. I know I would appreciate it, and I think all the other people of this county would appreciate it. Thank you.
Bonnie Newman from the disenfranchised area of District 1. Interestingly, my topic today was also Gary Kuntz, because I didn't see him on the agenda, and I wanted to talk about him. The election of a candidate is much more relevant than the selection of one. The people elected Gary Kuntz with all his good, with all his bad, with all his ugly. He was a hothead. He was always outspoken, and he wasn't in the best of health, but we loved him anyway, and he was our choice. But now he's dead. But he's not forgotten because he left us a legacy. That legacy is called a chain of command. Just like in the military, the head guy gets to choose who he trusts, who he depends on, to carry out his orders. Gary Kuntz chose. His legacy has continued. For the past eight or nine months, services in the sheriff's department have continued seamlessly, flawlessly, brilliantly, with the chain of command. Without him, he made the right choices, and we trust his choice, but not necessarily yours. Why has it taken so long? It seems that this effort may be more an attempt for certain people to grandstand and do some cheap politicking rather than to do right by the electorate. I'm just saying, we elected Gary Kuntz.
Any other public comments?
I think I might have showed up a little late. Matter of fact, I did. Are we making public comment on what's going on today, or we've got to wait till the end?
Wait till the end.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comments? Okay, so, actually, Captain Ballard, when we choose, when we start that proceedings, we'll have a public comment period for what we're doing, and then that's when you'll be able to make your public comments.
I apologize. Thank you.
I know, it's all really confusing.
I'm sorry.
I said it's all really confusing and challenging sometimes. Hearing no more public comments from the public here, so, Diane?
On our regular agenda, the first item is from Human Resources. The item is to appoint a sheriff after conducting a public interview of the five candidates.
Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Today, we are going to be interviewing the candidates, which are in the order that you'll be interviewing them. Gary Redman, Patrick Gerahan, Larry Blain Smith, Gary Stevens, and Rick Di Basilio. So, I will be bringing them in individually. They have all agreed to be interviewed one at a time, so...
How did that order get chosen?
I'm sorry?
How did that order get chosen?
This morning, they reported to Human Resources. We spoke with them regarding being interviewed individually or a panel of five. They agreed to be interviewed individually. We had numbers, 1 through 5, in a bag. I didn't have a hat. And they picked the numbers, and that's how it was chosen, randomly.
All right. Chair, a question?
Just to be clear, the information that was published in the agenda items last week has no reference whatsoever in that order?
No, it was randomly chosen from a lunch bag.
Okay, thank you. No lunch in there?
No lunch.
Judy, can you explain how the questions we had before today were selected and the process that HR went through with these questions?
All the questions that you have before you were submitted to the Human Resources office through the Ask the Sheriff email address or by the supervisors. They were sent to county council. County council went through them, made sure some of them were not proper to ask. They did take some of them out, and then we did combine some like questions.
Thank you. So, we have 20 questions here, basically?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hawkins, also, are we allowed to have follow-up questions on the 20 questions listed?
Yes. Once you ask a candidate a question, if their answer's not clear, you need them to elaborate on it, you can ask a follow-up question.
On that topic?
Yes, and if county council feels that the question's not appropriate, they will... Megan will interject.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Are we ready to start? Sorry?
If the audience has a question? If the audience has a question?
Yeah, so you want to explain that? So, the question was, if the audience has a question?
No, I mean, I'm talking about, I'll just say it if you can decide. I want you to know what the timing is. Is every candidate going to have the same amount of time to answer?
Oh, yeah.
I just think that would be nice to know.
So, what we got here, just so everybody knows, we have a list of questions, all right? Every supervisor has the same list, and there's one for each candidate, and each of these questions are, I mean, they're all the same. So, you have Gary Redman is first, and he's going to be asked these questions. Patrick Gerahan is second. They'll be asked the same questions, right? They're the same.
They have to be asked all the same questions. We can't ask one candidate certain questions and another candidate other questions.
What I think what Ms. Ranky's question was is whether each candidate would be given a set amount of time to answer the questions, and it is up to the board if you want to set a timeframe. You can leave it open-ended and just allow the candidate as much time as they would like to completely answer the question. That is in the board's discretion.
Right. So, that...
It just needs to be consistent throughout.
For me, I'll pull the board for that, but for me, you know, this is like the most important, highest ranking position in the county, and I believe that they should have every opportunity to answer their questions fully. I'm not going to limit them on time. Okay? And what do you guys think?
I agree with you.
Yes.
I would agree.
Okay.
I have a question. What if your 20 questions do not address my concern? Because I have a question, and it's huge for the county. And what if I go here that you like your announcements to be asked?
So, we've been advertising for how long?
It was advertised for two weeks.
Two weeks to submit your questions so they can be asked? The reason they do that is because since it's a... You go ahead and explain, counsel.
I'm sorry.
I thought it was a public forum where we could come in and ask questions like that.
No, they're public interviews. They're public interviews. It's not a public forum where the public can ask the questions. That's why we opened...
I have my question, if I may, you know, I can handle it, but I know it doesn't fit in what you're doing, but I work cattle and I'm gone seven days, waking all day long, and so I wasn't aware until two days ago what was going on, but I'm very concerned.
You can submit the question to Ms. Hawkins. We can look at it, but we would have to make a determination on it to include it in the 20 questions. But then again, then it would open up to if there's anybody else who would have questions, so it is a slippery slope. The time was allowed, unfortunately.
Do you want to explain why we have to do it this way?
The reason that we had an open session for the public to submit their questions is so that the public could be heard. That would allow staff to then compile the questions, make sure that the questions aren't inconsistent or...
Illegal to ask.
Well, not only illegal to ask, but we're asking the same question just in a different way. And so, that's why we had the open session, and then it was closed. So, I mean, it is in the board's discretion to increase it, but I don't ultimately recommend that because the time was given. We've already vetted it. We're here for these, with these questions, and it would just delay the process to get into the interviews if we have to then vet any additional questions that are being posed today rather than during the actual open period.
So, what do you guys think about that? Tough to ask.
I mean, I just feel we've had a lot of opportunity for folks to submit their questions. I think there are a good 20 questions here that are very well-rounded. I think if we open up to question after question, it's going to be a very, very long time for all concerned, and I'm hopeful that these 20 questions, I think, they're very well-rounded, and I think once folks see the 20 questions and hear them, they'll feel comfortable in that process.
I'd like to respond. I'm going to be a sheriff, retired, I'm a retired probation officer from this county.
Excuse me, Chair. Sir, can we have you speak to the microphone? Sure. Go up to the mic. While your questions may be, you know, well-rounded in your opinion, I see a lot that goes on, and I've had many deputies, many people approach me with concerns, and that's why I came. I, you know, I'm out of law enforcement. Like, I spent 10 years here in this county working narcotics for you, and there's issues in narcotics that are crazy going on and being allowed, and that's something to me. Where the sheriff-elect, you know, they need to give an opinion on how they're going to help you come within, you know, guidelines, because it's an ugly balance between federal law and state law and then Calverus County guidelines. And, you know, I see a lot. I've seen four grow, you know, houses go up in my backyard, and I used to get up and read the Bible every morning, and now I have to do it inside, once that bud is being processed, you know? And people are moving out of here like crazy, and there has to be, I mean, to me and in my opinion, you know, when I was a sheriff, I really wanted to be able to help my supervisors, my board supervisors, so we were not only meeting the needs of the people, but staying within legal boundaries with federal and state law. And that's why I had a question that I, you know, you guys need to think...
Have you read the questions that are here that we have? Have you read the questions?
That you have? No, I haven't. I haven't, no, sir. Like I said, you know, I run cows all day long, and morning to night, and I just haven't had a... People have approached me, and they said, "Do you know, you go on there?" And I said, "I can't." Okay, I know. I know, Megan, that we need to speed it up, and I'm a detriment, so I just wanted to give you my piece.
You're not a detriment, but I can tell you that, you know, it's probably addressed in here somewhere.
Okay, good. That's all I wanted to know, was my question addressed, you know? And I just wanted to let you know how my thinking is.
Thank you.
Question? Are these questions that have been provided to the board, have they been provided to the public?
No.
No, they haven't.
This is public comment? No, this is not public comment.
Okay, I understand it's not public comment.
No, I was asking a question.
So, I would like, is there a way that we can get these questions to the public?
Ms. Hawkins has a copy? You can read them. Ms. Hawkins has a copy of them.
Each person will hear them as we interview them.
Exactly.
Over and over. Yeah, you'll hear them at least five times if you stay here.
Alcegala Tax Tax Association, it might be a good idea to disclose the questions in advance, just in case there were some questions that might have been missed that's important to the public. I know we have a question regarding knowledge of the constitution of the candidates. To us, that's very important, but it might be one of the 20 questions that you have. We don't know. So...
Thank you.
I respectfully, you know, I hear what the public is saying, but I also want to remind the board that the reason that the county opened up the public comment period to submit the questions was exactly for this, to allow the public to submit their questions, to allow county staff ample time to compile it, to vet them, and to make sure that it is a sound list of questions, to now then open it up to multiple questions that the public... To now then open it up to multiple questions that the public is just now bringing forward today would delay the process. If you're intending to do that, I would recommend we halt the interviews because we would need to compile any of those questions, vet them, and then bring it back because all of the, all of the interviewers need to be asked the exact same questions. So although I hear what the public is saying, my recommendation to the board is to move forward with the questions that have already been submitted, have already been vetted, and are prepared for today.
Yes. So we've already had our public comment period. We're gonna start the proceedings. So could we sit down and do that, please? May I just ask one? Could we sit down and do that, please? I just have one quick one. I'm sorry. We're gonna start the proceedings.
You don't even have a list of your public comment on this issue. And the last public comment was on issues not on...
Excuse me, Mr. Kelly, just sit down, please, so that we can get started.
You're violating the Brown Act.
Mr. Kelly, the public comment on this item will be held as soon as the interviews are done. The public will have an opportunity to comment on this item once the interviews are completed and before the board deliberates on the item.
Well, I certainly appreciate the way the county keeps the people in the dark as to who is being possibly appointed against. I knew of three that came to the very first meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Kelly.
And two have never been...
You can make your comments at the end like everybody else.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Good.
I see the corruption. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kelly. But...
I see this last row going. Thank you.
to the candidate. Let them have their time. And, you know, the clapping and all that stuff and, you know, it just takes up more time. And so if we could, please, consider that as we move forward, okay?
Good morning.
Good morning.
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 Good morning, Mr. Redmond. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. Welcome. And thanks for applying for our sheriff's position. I commend you for doing that. That's, this is quite a time in Calaveras County. Thank you for doing it. Agreed. Thank you. Okay, so I guess the way I'd like to start is give you an opportunity to just introduce yourself to the public. And then after we do that, then we'll start asking questions, okay?
Okay. My name is Gary Redmond, and I have been a resident of Calaveras County for a little over 18 years. My law enforcement career is a little over 20 years in civilian law enforcement. I was in the Air Force for four as a SP. And that's kinda where I began my law enforcement career. Did four years there and got out of the Air Force and ended up with LAPD for two years and where I went through the academy. And originally where I'm from is Los Angeles. The wife and I decided to move up to Calaveras County. She was originally from Tooluma. It's kind of what brought me up this way. And we have made Calaveras home for, like I said, the last 18 years. In that time, I started with the Amador County Sheriff's Office, and I've been with them ever since.
Okay. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first. So we have a list of 20 questions that have been vetted through, the public has been able to submit these questions. The board has submitted questions vetted through county council and HR. So I'm not asking all 20, but I'll start with number one. Can you please tell us, interview panel, about all of your management and executive-level experience and how this experience has prepared you to serve in the role of one of California's 58 sheriffs?
So like I said, I've got just a little over 20 years' law enforcement experience. The last 15-plus have been, at least in supervisor role. The last probably five, five and a half years or so, I've been in an executive role at Amador Sheriff. I was a patrol lieutenant after becoming a sergeant for several years. And then I became a captain. I've been a captain for a little over about three and a half years. So with those duties, I've obviously been in the executive role of a sheriff's office. I've run two divisions in the sheriff's office. And basically, like any sheriff's office, they're split up in two divisions. You have the custody side and the operations side or patrol side. So I've been fortunate enough to run the Amador County Jail, which includes civil. It also includes the bailiff, so I'm dealing with the courts. And I've been over in the operations side for a little over a year now, where I'm doing patrol, dispatch, a lot of the special teams, investigations and whatnot. So with that, I've been fortunate enough to experience almost every position at our sheriff's office, from voting deputy to patrolman, which has been a huge impact in my career. And also supervised a lot of the ancillary duties of a sheriff's office, a lot of the special teams. I was also on SWAT for almost 17-plus years. And in that capacity, for the last eight years, I was the SWAT team leader. And currently, I'm the SWAT commander at the sheriff's office.
Thank you.
Captain, can I address your position right now, sir?
Whatever you would like, sir.
Okay. Captain, you've probably been doing a little research on the Calaveras County Sheriff's Department. Given the current staffing levels, how would you change or not change the existing beat structure in the county to ensure safe and proper law enforcement performance for public protection and performance with the resources we have now?
I don't know if I would necessarily go in and just make, start making changes with the current beat structure. You know, to me, as an administrator, you've got to come in and look at how efficiently are we deploying the resources? Are we efficiently deploying those resources? Where can we best manage some of the resources? What are the problem areas that we're dealing with? Also looking at statistics, time of day, night, day of week are, to me, an important factor and an important issue that you've got to look at when making those decisions. You know, it, like I said, I don't know if I'd necessarily just come in and start changing the beat structure, but more do a global look at how efficiently is the sheriff's office running? Can we pull people from other positions? Can, do we have to add people to different positions such as investigations? You know, are there, are there areas within the sheriff's office we can, we can pull those people from? So that's one of the first things I would, one of the first things I would take a look at. Did that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, close. Thank you.
Mr. Redmond, what awards or other recognition have you received for your law enforcement work?
I've, I don't know if I've really received any awards since, in my law enforcement career. I've been recognized by some outside groups for some of the work I do. One of the most notable that I'm particularly proud of is the NAMI group in Amador County. So as the jail captain, it became quite evident, the mental health issues inside the jail and even outside as far as patrol are a huge impact on resources, on time. There's a, there's a lot of mental health issues going on where the state has quite frequently... The state has basically, you know, defunded a lot of stuff, taken away a lot of money, and it's put a lot of pressure on law enforcement. So working with a group like that, getting CIT training, which is crisis intervention training, for our entire agency, including jail staff, dispatches, et cetera. I was recognized by that group for those efforts.
All right, thank you. What have you done to familiarize yourself with the need of Calaveras County and the sheriff's office ability to fill those needs?
Being with Amador, actually, you know, obviously living here, being with Amador County, and working with the sheriff's office over the last 18 years, you know, our, just because we're separated by a river doesn't mean our investigations, our lines don't cross. You know, I've been embedded with Calaveras and the deputies. I know quite a few of the deputies. I've worked on operations with the deputies. I just worked on an operation a couple of weeks ago involving some of our deputies, some of their deputies. You know, those quite frequently cross. I've also trained with them. So I've gotten to know them over the years. I don't really consider myself or look at myself as an outsider of the sheriff's office because I've been involved with so many of them and so many different investigations and operations and trainings over the years. So with that, I think I've got a fairly decent handle or decent idea of some of the problem issues of what the sheriff's office is facing. And with those in mind, obviously comes a plan of action of how to address some of those issues.
Okay. As sheriff, you will be responsible for maintaining partnerships with non-law enforcement agencies or departments throughout the county and state. Please describe what experience you have building relationships with other agencies and what specific tasks or projects you were directly responsible for within the scope of these duties.
So, you know, and that's extremely important. And I really pride myself on the fact that I've got a proven track record of building those relationships, establishing those relationships, the line of communication with the non-law enforcement agency partners. So with that, as a jail commander, I really was able to have good relationships with the public defender's office. And I was able to call on the public defender's office, hey, we've got an inmate, we have this issue, don't think custody is really the best place for this inmate. And because of the relationships and how we were able to work together, we're able to kinda speed the process up. Maybe instead of doing a 1368 on this person, we may want to do a conservatorship. And so we were able to do that. Efficiently, that's less time this person's spending in jail. The, not only the public defender's office, probation, all the other groups, the, you know, DA's office, and I know those are, those are involved, kind of in the law enforcement realm. But I'm also a member of the Child Abuse Council, Domestic Violence Abuse Council, like I said, part of, part of NAMI. So to me, it's very important in developing the relationships of not only the law enforcement, but the non-law enforcement. HR is another perfect example of being able to call upon HR for certain resources. You know, as a sheriff's office, you don't have all the answers. You don't have all the resources. You've got to be able to cooperate, reach out to the other groups, the community partners, and sort of tap into maybe some of their resources. And I've got a proven track record of doing that. I work very, very well with the other groups.
Do you feel a working, healthy relationship exists with public agencies and departments within the county? And what would you do to improve that relationship or those relationships?
You know, I don't think so. As a, like I said, from my perspective on what I've seen and what I've dealt with, I don't think there's as good a relationship as there should be or can be or needs to be. So as sheriff, I think one of the priorities is also reaching out, establishing those relationships, you know, making sure that we're all in this together. As county agencies, we're all into one common goal, and that's to serve the people of Calaveras County, whatever capacity we're in as government. And I truly believe in that. Otherwise, I wouldn't have spent 20 years of my life, four years in the Air Force of doing that. And I think it's important that we work together in coming to that common goal. And so as sheriff, yeah, that's absolutely one of the, one of the top priorities.
Thank you.
Captain, I'm gonna ask a question, but I want you to cover the following areas in your answer. Could you explain your program how to retain and hire deputies should we have additional resources and funding become available? I need to qualify that. You're probably aware of our conditions right now we have with our sheriff's department with, on being understaffed and being unlimited resources. If you had the ability, how would you retain deputies? How would you go across the process of hiring new deputies in recruiting or enhancement of bringing deputy applicants here?
I think, I think Calaveras has done a really good job of trying to recruit from qualified applicants within the county. If you can get the homegrown, the people that live here, they're sort of vested. Less likelihood of them leaving to different agencies. With that being said, we do the same, same thing in Amador. I've been involved in the hiring process of deputies for 15-plus years. And the recruitment and retention is, it's an issue across the board. Calaveras is not unique to that, and no agency is really immune from those effects. But with that said, I think Calaveras has done a pretty good job of trying to recruit the people from Calaveras, and that's where you wanna start. And as far as retention and the continued recruitment, it's not all about the money. It's not all about the pay, benefits of the job. Those are important to a certain extent. I came to Amador County and took a fairly significant pay cut because of the quality of life and where I wanted to live and the things that Amador County had to offer me. And I think there's a lot that the sheriff's office can do that doesn't cost money. It's the programs, the other involvement that the deputies can get in, and it's getting them vested not only in the sheriff's office, but in the community. It's also the attitude from the sheriff down of how these deputies feel and view themselves. Are they important? Do they feel that like they're important? And, you know, to me, that's a very, very important aspect and something that I've tried very hard at Amador. And as a manager for the last several years, I have a really good track record with our DSA, the Deputy Sheriff's Association, because of how I treat them, my expectations. It doesn't mean that they, they get to kinda willy-nilly do whatever they want, but it's all about respect. It's about all how they feel treated. And a lot of the programs that we, we offer them, training, I mean, all these kinda come into a play and an atmosphere that is created from the top down.
Please describe your familiarity with the county budget process and specifically what you know about the sheriff's office budget.
I took a look at the, one of the first things when I applied for this position, I took a look at the sheriff's office budget specifically. And to be honest, it's a little cumbersome. It's a little different than what I'm used to. You know, I currently manage over a three and a half million dollar budget. When I was in the jail, I managed a little bit more than that. So I am familiar with managing budgets and being accountable for that. Looking at the sheriff's office budget, it's, from what I could tell, it's not in real great shape. There's a lot of, and a sheriff's office, it's not a moneymaker. Most government isn't. Not in the business to make money. It is kind of a black hole that it takes money to run a sheriff's office. There's certain things you can do to mitigate that. There's certain aspects of bringing in a little bit of income that it can't be looked at as a moneymaker. So with that being said, there's a lot of, my view, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of grant funding being brought into the sheriff's office, which I think is a good thing. Yet grant funding always isn't there. You've gotta be real careful with that grant funding and those extra funding sources to make sure the money, money is there to cover when it's, when it's not there. Because that's not always gonna be around. So that's kinda what I've seen from the sheriff's office in reviewing the budget.
All right. Following up on that, given our budget constraints, how would you stretch our taxpayer dollars and still deter crime?
So it kinda goes back to that, one of the, one of the first questions is the efficiency. You know, are we efficiently running this sheriff's office to our best capabilities? And it's looking at all the different programs we're involved with, all the, all the extra duties, all the funding sources. You know, are we actually getting all the funding sources we can get? There's a lot involved with community corrections right now. There's a lot of funding sources out in the community. out in the community correction realm that I don't think Calaveras is tapping into. So really, it kind of starts with a look at that. You know, there's certain things, obviously, as a sheriff and sheriff's office, we have to provide services for. And an extremely important factor is the public safety, is making sure our guys and gals are out on patrol, patrolling the areas and doing what they need to do, but also being given the tools and the capabilities with that. And like I said, it goes back to really kind of strategically looking at all of the data, all of the information. Are we doing it the best possible way we can possibly do it?
Okay. Do you have a follow-up with that?
Yes, sir.
What kind of corrections funding are you talking about?
Well, out in community corrections, there's a lot of funding for when you're dealing with programs. There's a lot of program funding that is out there that can help augment or supplement the correction side. Trying to get people out of jail and into programs and keep them from the repeat offending. Not only is there funding for that, but it saves you, a jail manager should be really looking at that. Saves you money in the long run, because if we can get less people in the jail, less bed days, less bedtime, you're not paying for, you know, everything that comes along with having to pay for an inmate is, you know, food, the, you know, the housing costs, the food costs, the insurance costs, you know, all the medical bills. And that's kind of the funding I'm talking about. And there's quite a bit out there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, as the sheriff of Calaveras County, what would your top three priorities be and why?
My number one priority would be to stop the hemorrhaging of deputy sheriffs. And that's really what I see with Calaveras County right now, is the number of people that are leaving left and right. And like I said, it's not always about money. No agency is immune from this. Calaveras really isn't that different from other agencies. Some agencies are better able to manage that than others. And I really believe that starts from the top down. It's a whole attitude. It's the whole, there's a legitimacy in law enforcement that people talk about, the legitimacy of whether this agency is legitimate in the eyes of the community. And extremely important. And there's been studies and all sorts of information done on that. But there's also an internal legitimacy that goes along with that. Do the deputy sheriffs believe in, and will they follow the command staff of the sheriff's office? And it starts with respect. It starts with how you treat the people, what, you know, like I said, it's not just about the pay and benefits. It's really kind of a whole attitude shift of being able to provide an environment where they feel appreciated and they want to work. When you provide that environment and they're happy coming to the, coming to work, they're going to go out and provide a much better level of service to the citizen in Calaveras. And it's just, you know, the studies prove that. So that's one of the top priorities. Second is dealing with the budget, is taking a global look, an overall look at the budget, and all the programs we're involved with, all the funding resources, and are we efficiently doing that? Third, I think, is healing the sheriff's office. And by that, what I mean is, during the last election, there was a huge division within the sheriff's office. I saw it. I think anybody would have seen that. And I believe it still exists today. There's still kind of a divide going on in the sheriff's office. So unifying them, bringing them together, sort of healing them, is, to me, is also an important aspect.
Follow-up question to that?
Yes, sir.
You indicate there's a divide in the sheriff's department. Could you explain that? What type of division and what area?
So with the election, you, there were kind of two camps that popped up. You had the current sheriff, Sheriff Kuntz, and then the sheriff running for election, Pat Aron. And that really sort of caused a rift within the sheriff's office. And this is my opinion, sir. This is my perspective from viewing it, from knowing a lot of people within the sheriff's office. And I believe that there's still somewhat of this division of these kind of two camps that popped up that still exist today.
So what do you feel the sheriff's role is within the community and its organizations?
So the, to me, the role of the sheriff is really the person that's at the command of the ship. He's really steering that ship. And by ship, I mean the sheriff's office. He's got a, the sheriff really needs to set the tone of the sheriff's office, providing those services, providing excellent services, and making sure that we're going where we're supposed to be going. You know, in today's law enforcement, if you're not changing and adapting, you're sort of dying. And I think that's, safe to say, with any type of organization. So you've got to be able to adapt to that change. You've got to be able to forecast, sort of globally look into the future. And where does the ship want to go? Where do we want to take this? What are the needs? You know, me as a captain of patrol, I can sit there and look at stats or look at issues within my agency and say, well, I think this is really important, that we need to focus on this. But you go talk to community members, and it may be something completely different. So to me, it's really reaching out to the community, finding out what is important for them. What do they want to see? Where do they want to see the sheriff's office go? And to me, that's a very important factor. And as sheriff, I think you need to be thinking of that and need to be doing that.
Thank you.
Follow-up to that?
Yes, sir.
How would you reach out to the community and find out what they're thinking?
You go back to the community corrections. There's actually funding for doing surveys for that exact thing, believe it or not. There actually is funding out there. I think surveys are one way to do it. Being able to have forums, almost town hall-style meetings of getting people's input is another way to do it. You know, people need to feel involved with the sheriff's office. You need to be approachable. You need to be accessible. There's nothing secretive about a sheriff's office. There's nothing really secretive about what we do. So you've got to create that environment where they feel comfortable of, hey, this is what we want to see. And it's going to the different groups, communities, and asking for that information. Like I said, also, survey can play, social media is also another avenue that can play an important role in that.
Thank you.
Captain, I'll ask the question. Will you follow state laws regarding concealed weapons permits? Or what's your views on that?
My views, my personal opinion, is 100% for the Second Amendment. My personal opinion is anybody who's qualified to carry a gun or possess a gun and wants to carry it should be able to legally carry a firearm. As sheriff, I see no reason why not to continue that. As long as they are legally able to carry a firearm, they should be able to carry a firearm.
Thank you, Captain. Are you in favor of deputies wearing body cameras?
Yes, I am. Like I said, as a sheriff's office, there's nothing secretive about what we do. To my opinion and what I've seen, is we currently have video cameras in all of our vehicles at the Amador Sheriff's. We also require the deputies to record all of their contacts. So you've got a video camera with video that also records and a personal recorder that's issued to every deputy. So every time they're supposed to be recording their contacts. And what I've seen is it kind of creates the opposite of not only the deputy's behavior, but the citizen's behavior when they know they're being recorded. I think really, no matter what my opinion is on this, is it's going to happen. This is something that will happen regardless of how I feel about it, whether I want to do it or not. It's going to happen at some point in time. The state of California will demand all peace officers wear body cameras. So with that, there's funding out there. There are sources of funding. Let's get ahead of this. Let's make it happen. Let's use the money of the state to make it happen.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us about Senate Bill 178, the new Electronic Communication Privacy Act, and what its impact will be on the sheriff's office?
In investigations, we deal with this. I'm going to say, my lieutenant, my investigators deal with it more than I do. As a captain, I don't get involved too much with the investigative aspect, a little bit. So I'm not real familiar with it, except for the fact that it's very problematic for us in the sense that really cell phones are pretty much off limits. And they're still, we went to DOJ trying to get, the Department of Justice, trying to get a clear line on what are you guys going to download for us, even if we have a search warrant? What language do we need to put in a search warrant to make sure that you guys, you as DOJ, and that's who we use to do our forensics, will extract that information? They can't even tell us right now. That's a problem. So it's kind of one of those, it's a little bit up in the air. We're not 100% sure. We're writing them in our search warrants, trying to get that information, whether we're going to actually get it or not, really can't tell you at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Can you explain the new law under Assembly Bill 71, Criminal Justice Reporting, and what the law is and what fiscal impacts it will have on the sheriff's office?
I'm not familiar with 71. I probably have heard of it. I don't really know stuff by assembly bills.
Can you explain what impacts Proposition 47 felony reduction has had on the community and the sheriff's office?
Impacts for the sheriff's office were, and once again, I was back in the jail when this occurred, were obviously good. We saw a reduction in the number of inmates. Our jail was routinely overcapacity. I dealt with a jail that was crumbling, falling apart, much like Calaveras did for years and years, same issues in Amador. So the impacts fiscally and for the jail were good. The impacts for the community, I think there's been some studies, and they're still debating on whether those are good or not. What we have seen is obviously the number of arrests for certain crimes are way down, mostly the narcotics-related arrests. Can I sit here and say that I've seen a rise in burglaries, a rise in thefts associated because of Prop 47? No, I can't. I think it's still too early, too early to tell. There's, like I said, a lot of debate going on, even within the state, of whether this is negative or good. But in a kind of a fiscal way, it actually reduced our numbers, although we're starting to increase back up, so.
I have a follow-up question. I'm not familiar with Amador's jail situation. Do you have a new jail, or?
No, no, we do not. So our jail was built in, I want to say, '82. It's designed for 76 inmates. Routinely, I was at 100, 105, outsourcing. I spent a lot of money on sending people to other jails. I had contracts with other jails, including, well, in Calaveras, I tried for over a year to get a contract with Calaveras. Eventually, we were able to negotiate a contract. And for that money, we were fortunate, because I used CCP money for that. We weren't spending our CCP money. So we could take that money and use it to pay for bedtime at other jails. And we're still contracting now. We still have a few people in El Dorado, Nevada County, and whatnot. So we're in the works. We've got the SB 863 money, and they're working at doing an addition, which is going to help. It will definitely help.
Thank you.
Follow-up question, Sheriff. You mentioned you contracted with Calaveras, attempted. What happened?
We just never got a contract back. We kept asking, hey, we need bed space. And we've always had an agreement with Calaveras that if they need to house somebody in Amador, we would house them, and vice versa. We would kind of do a one-for-one swap. I don't know the particulars of why it took so long.
But it was something that was initiated by Amador County?
Correct.
And was waiting for Calaveras County to respond.
Correct.
Thank you. Yeah, I do. I'd like to ask a question. Once again, sorry for this question, Captain, but assuming while you're on duty, you witnessed a clear traffic violation, which involves one of your off-duty deputies, would you issue that deputy a citation?
Clarify, a traffic violation?
I'll read the question pervading.
Thank you.
Assuming while on duty, you witnessed a clear traffic violation, which involved one of your off-duty deputy sheriffs, would you issue that deputy a traffic citation?
The answer is no. I'm not going to issue one of my deputies a traffic citation. There's other avenues for me to discipline that deputy. I can't tell you the last traffic ticket I wrote. It's probably been five-plus years. I mean, it's just not really a function of the sheriff's office. There are other avenues of disciplining a deputy for committing traffic violations.
Thank you, Captain.
The new medical marijuana laws, SB 266, AB 243, and SB 643, encourage local agencies to regulate medical marijuana in order to secure state permits. Will you, as sheriff, comply with all local laws adopted by the Board of Supervisors in regulating medicinal marijuana and potentially legal marijuana in the future?
Yes, I will. I'm not against marijuana, medical marijuana, and I'll say that, medical marijuana. There's a reason for, you know, Prop 215, when that first became law, of providing medicine for patients under a doctor's recommendation. I'm not against the growing of medical marijuana for collectives and dispensaries. What I am against is anything illegal and the profiting, the massive amount of profiting that some of these growers are doing. And not every single one of them. You know, they're not all illegal growers, but there is a prolific issue, not only in Calaveras, in Amador County, and other counties, of these illegal growers growing under 215, but selling the marijuana for massive amounts of money. That I have a problem against. It not only affects the quality of life here, it's illegal to begin with. It affects the quality of life. And I think I'm preaching to the choir, because you guys have had board meeting after board meeting, of people up here talking about the issues with the cannabis growers. The Board of Supervisors wants to regulate it. That's what I will enforce. I will enforce those regulations.
Thank you. Do you support neighborhood watch groups and feel they help to bring concerned citizens together with law enforcement to make our communities safer?
I do. Like I said, I think it's very important that the sheriff's office be embedded in the community. For years, as a sergeant, I ran our cops program, so I was heavily involved with the cops program, neighborhood watch, getting neighborhood watches established within Amador County. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, I think it's extremely important. And once again, it goes back to creating that legitimacy within the county, which I think is obviously also important.
And how would you go about, you know, implementing this, given the constraints of the budget?
Neighborhood watches cost us nothing. It's time. It's a deputy's time. I had a, I still have a sergeant that is very, very good at it. I had a, I had, I still have a sergeant that is very, very good at it. To me, it's identifying those key people that want, one, want to do it and are good at, talking at public groups and being involved in the community. And there's always people within the sheriff's office that like doing that stuff. It's getting them involved. Like I said, the information and the expense is really on the neighborhood watch group that wants to establish that. It's not on the sheriff's office. It's really, to me, the sheriff's office role is pushing that information out there and kind of helping them get started.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. You mentioned cops program. What is that?
Community-oriented policing program.
Thank you.
It's called probably 100 different names throughout different law enforcement agencies.
There's just a lot of acronyms, so I wanted to make sure I understood that one. Thank you.
Question number 20. So what would you communicate to your deputies regarding the Black Lives Matter movement?
You know, what would I communicate? My opinion is, it's not a, it's really not a viable group. I don't see an issue up here with the Black Lives Matter, although it potentially could be. You know, I get what they're trying to say and what they want to say. I just don't agree with the way they're going about this. Really, as sheriff, it makes no difference to me whether you're part of Black Lives Matter, if you're part of this group, if you're part of whatever group that I may not personally want to be part of or even agree with. The fact is, you have to take that aside and treat everybody with the same dignity and respect that they deserve until it's deemed otherwise. And that really is dictated upon the individual and shouldn't be dictated upon the individual deputies.
Okay. That's it. That's all the questions. Answered very well. Thank you.
Is there anything you'd like to add that we haven't thought about?
There is. You know, it obviously was not an easy decision for me to make. I've got a very bright career and done, been very, very fortunate to have done very well at Amador and been exposed to a lot. I've been mentored by our current sheriff and undersheriff, and I was able to go to the FBI National Academy, which is very prestigious, a lot of leadership, been exposed to a lot of issues of running basically the sheriff's office. I'm really the highest you can get without being appointed at our sheriff's office. So it was, it's not an easy decision, but I've lived here 18 years. I've got a vested interest in this community of making sure that the best possible candidate is going to be appointed for sheriff. And I wouldn't be here, wouldn't waste any of my time or your time if I didn't believe I was the best possible candidate and had the most experience. Really, to me, it's under a tragic event. The board has the unique and sort of rare opportunity of appointing somebody in this position, because not every sheriff that's elected works out to be a very good sheriff. The qualifications are quite minimal at best. So I would just encourage the board, and I do appreciate you opening this up outside the agency. And there's been a lot of buzz about, well, we need to keep it within, we need to keep it within, and I obviously wholeheartedly disagree on that. My sheriff came from without, and I can tell you Martin Ryan's been one of the best sheriffs I've ever known, phenomenal. He brings a whole different skill set, a whole different perspective, that sometimes needs to be done. It needs to be looked at by different eyes. It's not that other people aren't capable, it's just different perspectives, different environments, and being able to deal with different things. So I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
We appreciate yours.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up like this. It's, you're right, it's a big decision.
Thank you very much.
So I wanted to mention something. I don't know if we explained this earlier, but these questions, we'd never seen before this morning either. So when we came in this morning, the first time, we got to see them.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Garahan.
Good morning, Mr. Garahan. Thank you for applying for the sheriff's position. And we know it's a tough decision to make when you're applying for a position, a highest position in the county, actually. And I certainly appreciate you stepping up. So we're going to ask you a series of 20 questions. But first, I'd like to give you an opportunity to address the board and the audience on, and the public, on, let them know something about yourself, whatever you'd like to say.
Hello, I'm Pat Garahan. I'm here seeking appointment to the Office of Sheriff of Calaveras County. My wife and I have lived in the county for 24 years. This is where we chose to raise our children here. I love Calaveras County. I bring 39 years of police experience with me to this interview today. I've worked as a military policeman in the Marine Corps. I worked in a small town in Flagstaff, Arizona. I've worked in a large urban city, Oakland, California. I've even worked doing policing in Afghanistan. I want to continue my years of service to others. That's why I'm here today. I'm a dedicated professional. I'm a proven leader. I know how to work together with people to get things done and get them accomplished. I bring no baggage to the Office of Sheriff here. I don't owe anybody anything, except to do the job to the very best of my ability. And nobody owes me anything, except to do the same, to do their best job to the best of their ability. If I can do the job, I'll be an asset specifically to the Office of Sheriff and to the county as a whole. Thank you.
Great. Who would like to start this time?
I'll start. So we have a series of, there's 20 questions, and these questions have come from the community and the board, been vetted through county council and HR to make sure they're appropriate in the legal arena. So question one is, please tell us about your management and executive level experience and how this experience has prepared you to serve in the role of one of California's 58 sheriffs.
My management and executive level experience revolves around my duties when I was a lieutenant with the Oakland Police Department and an acting captain. I was a watch commander in that capacity, which meant that I was responsible for the day-to-day functions during my shift, anywhere from several dozen officers, depending upon what the situation was and what events were going on. Sometimes I was in command of well over 100 officers there. I wouldn't call it management experience, but there have been several times where I was, for instance, I was placed in charge of the K-9 unit in Oakland as a police officer. It's the first time they ever did that. That was a SARDAS ballot. I was responsible for the entire budget for the unit. We increased it threefold, from six teams to 18 teams. I have, among other things, I have the management certification from post, police officer standard training, peace officer standard and training. Once I retired from the police department, I was employed as what they called a law enforcement professional through a contract for the Department of Defense, where I was embedded with a Marine Corps infantry battalion. I was tasked with many things, but one of them was being the battalion commander. This is a Marine Corps officer who's in charge of about 1,200 Marines and Navy corpsmen preparing to go into combat, as his subject matter expert on all things policing. It wasn't just working with this individual Marines out there, but I had to give him sound advice in, let's just call it a politically touchy environment occasionally.
Thank you.
Mr. Garahan, could you explain your program that you have in mind for retaining our deputies and hiring new deputies, given the fact that you're aware of our current situation, manpower or person power in our sheriff's court?
One of the things I have on my list here, focus on retention. 55 sworn positions, depending upon who I talk to, between eight and 13 vacancies there. What's going on here is a training ground mentality, where people come here, they get hired, they get trained up, and then they leave after a short period of time. We have to examine the pay and benefits. One of the things I've been doing is speaking to people within the sheriff's office, command officers, supervisors, deputies, correctional officers, civilian staff, getting their opinion. And from what I hear, time and time again, from the sworn staff, is that pay is an issue. Also, working conditions, specifically lack of leadership there. I can address that leadership issue. That also ties in with the morale. People don't like the pay, they don't like the working conditions, they're dissatisfied with the leadership or lack of leadership, as it may be. It has an adverse effect on morale there. I know from a brief conversation with HR that we have no shortage of people applying for jobs here. The problem is retaining them here. So we have to create an environment where we have that quality of life, where people want to work and live here in Calaveras County. Ideas, I can't do it alone. I can do part of it as far as effective leadership and increasing the morale. I treat people with respect. I genuinely care about the people I work with. When I was a boss, I never referred to it as the people that worked for me. They're always people I work with, and that's a good attitude to have. You can't fake caring about people. You have to genuinely care about them. And that goes a long ways. They may not be able to get as much of a pay raise or whatever else, but if they know that they're valued in this organization, they'll, well, we want them to, and we can encourage them to go that little bit extra mile there. But aside from that, I'll have to work with you, the Board of Supervisors, Human Resources, Deputy Sheriff's Association, and look at how we together can resolve some of these issues. I know there's not a whole lot of money out there, but there is some money. I was told by the auditor that there was a $3 million carryover in the general fund last year. I know there's probably a lot of people have their eyes on that, but perhaps that's one thing that we could go back. I know the contract for the DSA has been, goes into 2017, but at some point, we're going to reach a critical stage where more people are leaving and we're not filling those positions. And it's not a matter of just going out and grabbing somebody and saying, okay, you're a deputy now. From the beginning to when they're operating efficiently out there by themselves is about two years, generally speaking. So there's a time lag with that. So that's even more incentive to keep the people here that we're training. That's the main issue with it, is to keep them here, because what I want to avoid is getting to a critical state where we simply do not have enough deputies to do the job, and somebody is going to get hurt out there. It's unsafe for the deputies, and it's unsafe for the public. The other thing is, look around. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We're not the only agency that's suffering from this issue. See what other agencies have been doing, where they've been successful, and replicate that here. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. So you talk about improving morale, and in a non-monetary sense, give me an example of something you would do.
Well, no everybody's name. One of the things I plan to do, if I'm appointed, is within two to three weeks, personally introduce myself and sit down with every single employee within the agency. If they're working the midnight shift, I will come in on the midnight shift and meet with them. That's important for a number of reasons. Number one, people like it when they know your name. Number two, they're going to see that I truly do care about them and that I'm interested in them. I want them to do a good job, and I want them to be happy and productive here in the sheriff's office.
Thank you. Follow-up question. Mr. Garahan, what's better for the department, overtime or positions, additional positions?
I'm sorry, overtime or what?
Overtime or additional positions to fill vacancies and debates.
Well, in the short term, the fallback is always pay overtime, because you're not paying the benefits and everything else. But in the long term, it's to fill those positions. I'll give you an example. I talked to a supervisor here. At the time, this was a couple of weeks ago, one of his deputies had worked in excess of 20 hours, or, I'm sorry, 20 days straight, 12-hour shifts, okay? Part of the problem is that deputy is, was described as the good guy that will always answer the phone and answer the call to come in, okay? But we've got to look at, from a safety standpoint and a liability standpoint for the county, is what if that deputy is in a traffic accident and is injured or killed? What if they're, God forbid, they're in a shooting, okay? One of the first questions, how many days have you been working? So, short term, we can pay some overtime. Long-term solution is, we have to fill positions.
Thank you. What awards, excuse me, or other recognition have you received for your law enforcement work?
What recognition?
Yeah, let me read it again. I'm just going verbatim, Mr. Garahan. What awards or other recognition have you received for your law enforcement work?
Well, over the years, I've received a number of letters of appreciation. When I was a military policeman, I was selected as Military Policeman of the Month at the base I was at. A short time later, I was selected as the Marine of the Month for that entire Marine Corps base. When I was a police officer in Flagstaff, Arizona, I was recognized as Officer of the Month a few years ago. In the Oakland Police Department, again, I received a number of letters of commendation. I have the Tactical Team Operations Qualification Badge, that's one of the awards we have. I have seven different specific unit citations, I guess you could call them, or they're not medals, but they are citations. Worked in a K-9 unit, those type of things. I was awarded two Medals of Merit, specifically for my work in the K-9 unit. I was a dog handler for 14 years. I've also been awarded two Medals of Valor for what people recognize, the department recognizes, acts of heroism. I think that about sums up the awards recognition.
Thank you.
Okay. What have you done to familiarize yourselves with the need of Calaveras County and the sheriff's office's ability to fill those needs? sheriff's office's ability to fill those needs?
Well, first of all, I talk to people. I talk to, as I mentioned before, some of the command staff within the sheriff's office, some of the supervisory staff, the deputies, correctional officers, civilian staff, and members of the public. I like talking about police work and learning. What I learned a long time ago was that the police sometimes think we have the answer for things, law enforcement, and we don't. And what you do is you get that information from people. That's where I found that there would have been pointed out to me is a number of issues. Find my notes here, because I specifically have that addressed. And I ask them what they perceive as the problems within the sheriff's office. Staffing, pay and benefits, some working conditions. And then I followed up with, well, what is working? Because it's easy to find out what the problem areas are, and we need to do that and identify them, and once we identify them, come up with solutions to them. But you also want to, as a leader, find out what's working well and make sure that that's sustained within the organization.
What was working well is a follow-up?
People liked the shifts. Correctional officers liked their shifts. I was kind of shocked, actually, 12-hour shift, that was never my favorite. And the deputies in patrol liked the shifts. They liked to take home cars. Some of them just like living here because they are Calaveras County born and bred. And again, we want to reinforce that and cultivate that. So there are good things here. Nothing is ever all bad.
Thank you.
As sheriff, you will be responsible for maintaining partnerships with law enforcement agencies and/or departments throughout the county and state. Please describe what experience you have building relationships with other agencies and what specific tasks or projects you were directly responsible for within the scope of these duties.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I make something clear? You made a little error that was pretty critical. It's non-law enforcement. You said law enforcement agencies.
Yep, that is correct. Glasses help.
Could you repeat your question, please?
Sure. As sheriff, you will be responsible for maintaining partnerships with non-law enforcement agencies or departments throughout the county and state. Please describe what experience you have building relationships with other agencies and what specific tasks or projects you will directly, you were directly responsible for within the scope of these duties.
Well, it started, I would say, for me, back when I was a walking officer in Flagstaff. You have a walk-in beat in a downtown area that had a lot of problems. You start meeting all the store owners, the business owners there, developing those relationships with them, so that you become their officer. While I was a supervisor in Oakland, and again, as a command officer, we dealt with a lot of community groups. Some of them be described as activists and anti-police, some of them pro-police, with regard to community-oriented policing and problem-oriented policing. And again, going into it with an open mind and realizing that we don't know everything and we don't have all the answers, be willing to listen to people and ask for clarification if you need to. There's no harm in saying, I don't know. The issue is. There's a number of projects we did. I'll just outline, one of them that was really small. We went in, we said, okay, you have a drug problem here. I came in with a great big plan, we'll do this, we'll do that, search warrants and everything else. And an elderly lady that lived on the block said, Sergeant Gerihan, all we want you to do is tow the junk cars. I said, okay, we can do that. We did it in about four hours. And then I realized afterwards, the junk cars is where the drug dealers were keeping all the drugs and everything else. So that's just a small project. I've been on many, many, many others there. As far as other non-law enforcement agencies, community services I have here, I'm in the Rotary Club, one of the, well, I'm the community service chair there in that club. We're working on the Peace Pole Projects. I'm also the president of the Charities Board. We do the Christmas to Remember. I've been a counselor at the Rotary Youth Leadership Academy. I'm the co-chair of the Oktoberfest. That dealt with a lot of businesses, public entities, everything else, got everybody to work together on the same page there. One of the other projects that I have, I sit on a scholarship committee for the Rotary Club, and what I found in the last couple of years is we have too many qualified applicants and not enough scholarships. So one of the things I did was instituted within the club as a means of, on a weekly basis, gathering more funds, and we were able to fund one additional, just through that project, one additional $500 scholarship there. I'm the, in the Marine Corps League, and I'm the Calaveras County Coordinator for Marine Corps Toys for Tots. That opened up another whole avenue there of dealing with non-law enforcement people. I'm not on the job right now, but in my capacity as that coordinator, dealing with charity groups, people in need, the Resource Connection, businesses throughout the entire county. Recently was seated as a director on the Board of Directors for the Resource Connection. So again, that's dealing with a lot of different aspects, the Crisis Center, the Food Bank, all of those, the first five, children's education, could fall under that umbrella there.
So my question is similar, but it's like, what I'd like to hear you talk about is, do you feel that a working, healthy relationship exists with public agencies and departments within the county? And what would you do to improve those relationships?
Well, I've already taken the first step. Part of this interview, I made appointments and I spoke with Chief Probation Officer, Sam Leach, our Auditor Controller, Rebecca Callen, our District Attorney, Barbara Yook. There were, those were the three primary ones. I didn't want to take up too much of their important time. But I wanted to learn, the first question I asked was, how are the relationship between that organization and the sheriff's office? What can we do to improve it? Those things. So I've already taken that step. It's critical, particularly those three, the big three, whatever you want to call them, to maintain a professional and smooth working relationship with. Sheriff's Office deputies can arrest people all day long, but if they're not getting prosecuted because for some reason we have a poor relationship with the District Attorney's Office, that needs to be repaired because, now, that doesn't exist. That there is a good relationship there, and I intend to carry that on. Same with Chief Probation Officer, he told me, there's a deputy sheriff that's assigned to them as liaison. Something will maintain, it goes on there. The budget, I look at it this way, that's something where we, again, have to work together. I'll be honest, I would like to get as much money as I possibly could at every budget hearing. I'm pragmatist, I realize that's not going to happen all the time. But having a good working relationship with, for instance, the auditor's office is going to enable me to come in for a budget hearing and give you something that's been well researched, well thought out, and it's not just banging a fist on there saying, we need more people because.
So a follow-up, what one thing would you do to help improve that relationship?
Maintain it. Those relationships are going well. I work well with other people. I'm a very confident guy, but I also know I don't know everything. I'm not afraid to ask questions. I'm not afraid to be told I'm wrong. I'm not afraid to correct something that I'm doing incorrectly. So, because I'm a professional, we will maintain those professional, smooth relationships there.
Thank you.
Mr. Gerihan, we're going to go back to operations here a little bit. Given the current staffing levels, how would you change or not change the existing beat structure in the county to ensure safe and proper response by our existing levels of
Well, if you don't have enough people, and from what I understand, on a good day, there's a sergeant and three deputies out there in the field. It doesn't matter how you configure the beats, because it's about having the people to staff the beats. So what we need to do is, rather than how can we play a shell game with that and move them around, because it still doesn't matter. If somebody's in Valley Springs and the other deputy in Arnold needs cover, we still have to travel that distance there, no matter what beat we call it or anything else. So it goes back to the staffing issue. One of the things I've always wanted, I spoke about when I was running for sheriff, and I think it's still a valid thing to consider, is to bolster the reserve program here, to supplement the deputies that we have. Right now, if there's a call where it's going to take two deputies, that's two cars to go to that. That's two-thirds of the people are on, excluding the supervisor. If, say on Saturday nights, Friday and Saturday nights, special events, those type of things, if we can recruit and maintain a good reserve force, which is cost-effective, because we don't have to pay them, they're already peace officers, they'll have a reserve peace officer status, put that person in the car with the deputy, now we can send one car. It's not costing us any more money. You have two people there. You also bring a lot of experience with somebody that is a retired officer, for instance. We have a lot of them living out here. Recruit them to become deputies for, or reserve deputies for us. The other thing, and it's because of my background, I think that we can do as far as the officer safety, is increase the K-9 unit. Because, again, there's calls that somebody can go to, they still may need cover, but it would be safer for them initially when they arrive there, if they have a dog in the car. Also, a number of other things, searching for suspects is going to be enhanced. That's, again, cost-effective. We don't have to pay retirement for dogs, they eat very little, and they work real cheap, put it that way there. Again, the focus is on the people, not how we juggle those beats around. I know one of the goals is to fill that overlap, or I think they call it the E-beat here or whatever. Well, it's, we need people to do that.
Follow-up question to that. Do you believe crime analysis, the current trends should dictate where we put our most valuable assets or our only resources? Example, if we see a burglary problem or something occurring in District, actually B1 or AB, would you put the majority of your available forces in there during that time span to address that specific problem? Or would you just react to the calls for service?
Now, see, that's part of the problem, is historically, law enforcement in general has been reactive. We show up once your business has been broken into. We show up once the bar fight is done. Crime analysis is no longer in its infancy, it's accepted out there. I was looking the other day at some of the adjacent counties here where they have crime mapping, where citizens can go on and see where clusters of crimes are going on. I tried to find out how much it costs, I couldn't, but that's something I would like to have. It enables the public to be more aware. But it makes sense, just in any business, you put your resources where they are needed and where they will do the most good. Now, that doesn't mean that if we have a burglary problem in Valley Springs and we concentrate on that, that nothing's going to happen somewhere else and we may have to draw those people out. You have to plan for those contingencies. But if you don't focus on the problems, it's community-oriented policing and problem-oriented policing in a nutshell. You're never going to resolve those problems.
Please describe your familiarity with the county budget process and specifically what you know about the sheriff's office budget.
Well, as I mentioned, I met with Rebecca Callen to get an education on the budget. County budget overall, as you well know, it's about $140 million. $43 million of that is from the general fund. Sheriff's Office budget is approximately $15 million, with about $9.4 million of that coming from the general fund. The remainders from other sources, supplemental law enforcement services fund, the 443, the rural counties money that comes in from the state, Calima DEA grant, I don't know if it's a grant, but the ongoing revenue that comes in from them, boats and waterways, there are some grants there, the lake contracts, those things. So that's what makes up that difference there. What I did find is that about 89% of the budget goes towards personnel and benefits. And out of that, 44% of each dollar that we're paying in salary, we're paying in purse there. So those are things that I did not know about the budget specifically. They did refinance that loan when they went into purse, the 3% at 50. That'll be paid down in 2018, and it'll reduce it from 44% or 44 cents on the dollar to between 33, 34 cents. So you get about a 30% reduction in that 10 cents overall. As I mentioned before, I learned that there was a $3 million carryover that wasn't spent out of the general fund last year. That's what I was told, Mr. Wright. It may or may not exist, or somebody has already grabbed it. I learned that there's about $3.2 million in the Teter Fund, and then there's a contingency fund, about $1.2 million for the county. So, there's money there. Sheriff's Office is the biggest bulk of it, biggest bulk of their budget is personnel and benefits. Bottom line, we have to be very careful spending other people's money. What we do spend it on, we need to do it judiciously and wisely, and get the most bang for our buck, so that our deputies have the best training possible, the best equipment possible, so they can provide the best service to the citizens of the county.
Okay. Next question, along those lines. Given our budget constraints, how would you stretch our taxpayer dollars and still deter crime?
I'm sorry, what was the last portion? And still be what?
Deter crime.
Mentioned the reserves before. Not that I'm losing focus on filling those positions with regular sworn deputies, but bring those reserves on board. We also have a volunteer program. Now, they're non-sworn, but they pick up a lot of slack that the deputies may normally do. About 20, 25 of those right now. I would love to see 50 or more volunteers brought on. Again, they can do a lot of manning the substations, taking some of the minor reports. I had a lady call me the other day, had, found some property, what should I do? Call a deputy? No, take it to the substation, turn it in. Those type of things there. Find out from the DSA what their input is on it also, because, again, this can't be a unilateral decision. I may think I have a brilliant idea and it wouldn't work there, but that's the first thing, is the reserves there. And then, keep working on that retention, because it's a waste of, I won't say well, it is a waste of money for the county and the sheriff's office to bring somebody on, train them up, make them marketable, and then they leave somewhere else. So invest in that retention and keeping those people here.
And just a follow-up on that. So you've talked about bolstering the reserve, increasing the reserve. How would you go about doing that?
Recruit, recruit, recruit. Part of my job as a sheriff is to be out of the office and out meeting with people. I've met a number of retired police officers that have said, hey, if you were sheriff, I would come on and I would be a reserve officer for you. It's going to take some training for them and everything else, but they're out there, I know they are. There was a gentleman at one function I was at, he was a retired Marine Major, he was also a retired FBI profiler. He came up, he gave me his card, and he said, I don't know if we could work it out, but I would be more than glad to come in and help your detectives on something. Yeah, we shouldn't turn our nose up at help from an FBI profiler for nothing. He would come in and volunteer. That's the thing, you have to set the parameters for the program, like they've just come up with the sheriff's intern program, and then started disseminating that information. Take what we have, refine it, and then recruiting program out there. If people don't know about it, they're not going to answer your call. they're not going to answer your call.
Thank you. So, as the sheriff of Calvers County, what are your, what would your top three priorities and why? What are your top three priorities and why?
Staffing. Specifically, that retention. We have to crack that case there so that we have people here. The other one would be the equipment issue. Some of the vehicles they have, I understand, are in excess of 200,000 miles. We can't have our people driving around in that kind of condition, that type of vehicles. There's also a problem with the communication system, which I understand. I mean, that's kind of endemic in law enforcement, it seems. But I came across an article about a grant a couple of weeks ago. Two counties up in Oregon got a $2 million grant from Motorola. They were having similar problems. Dead spots, radios weren't working, poor gear. $2 million grant worked with Motorola across the two counties up there. Now, 46 different agencies using that radio system and it's successful and it works. That carries over, again, to what I said before about giving the people the best equipment we can and the best training so that they can do the job to the best of ability. Also, law enforcement is dangerous. We've got to look out for people. To set a deputy out there where if they're going to go into a dead zone where they can't communicate with anybody, it's unconscionable. We've got to solve those problems there. Was that three?
Yeah.
Okay.
What do you feel is a sheriff's role within the community and its organizations?
In the community's organization?
Yeah, within the community and its organizations.
Well, I believe the sheriff is one of the most, if not the most, critical elected office in the county. It's elected, it's created in the Constitution because that's what the people want. Being in law enforcement and as the sheriff, like the deputies that work with you, that's an awesome, and I don't mean that as teenagers say it. I mean it as the word is meant, responsibility when you have the authority to take somebody's freedom away and put them in jail. As sheriff, I would be the face, the spokesperson for the sheriff's office. Again, it goes to relationships with the community, being out there, answering people's questions, finding out what issues are, being honest with them. If we can't fix something, or if their son is a career criminal and we can't get him out of prison, those type of things. But you have to build that trust with the community so that people know that you'll be honest with them, they'll treat everybody fairly and equitably, and that they can have confidence when a deputy shows up at their door, they're going to get the best-trained person with the best equipment, doing the best job possible. My goal for the sheriff's office is to move us forward and make us recognized as one of the premier law enforcement agencies in the state of California. There may be people going, chef, come on. Well, number one, if you don't set that goal, you'll never achieve it. And number two, we may be small, but there's no reason we cannot be outstanding. There are a number of outstanding people working here already, and we can carry on with that. So, it's critical that rolls up within community involvement. I've mentioned some of the stuff that I have. I'm involved in a number of boards, everything else that. People see you, and we're in a peculiar county here where you are rubbing elbows, for lack of a better term, with people on a daily basis. It's not like LA County or wherever where the sheriff's never seen. So, you're going to be out there with the people, and they have to be able to trust you and have to have confidence in your ability.
I have a follow-up question to that. You mentioned the importance of the sheriff and such, being out in the community. How do you feel about your staff, your leadership staff, staff in general, and their community involvement?
How do I feel about them?
Yeah, or having, would you encourage, I guess, staff, et cetera, to be...
One of the primary tenets of leadership, and I could go on and on about that, is setting the example, okay? You don't ask your people that you work with to do something you're not willing to do. I'm already deeply invested in the community out here. I expect the leadership within the sheriff's office to do the same. Now, they don't have to be on 20 different boards and everything else. But we can't be so insular that we're unapproachable. We can't be so aloof that people don't trust us or can't approach us. I would expect them, and, again, part of leadership is setting expectations for people. This is what I expect you to do. They're not unreasonable, they're achievable. And then, we go from there, depending upon what their likes and dislikes are. Somebody doesn't like to play basketball, I'm not going to send them to be the counselor for a basketball camp.
Thank you.
Mr. Garahan, would you follow state law in connection with granting or denying concealed weapons permits?
First of all, follow the Constitution. Second Amendment says the right to. Keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. I'll definitely follow state law, okay? I'm a gun owner. I can carry CCW by virtue of my profession. My son-in-law just got a CCW here. I'm a life member in the NRA. I'm a trap-shooting coach. I think any law-abiding citizen that wants to enjoy that right should be allowed to. There's been a, what's been described as a shallow-ish sentiment here within the county. I see no reason not to carry that on at all.
Thank you. Are you in favor of deputies wearing body cameras?
Yes, and I'll be honest. I'm one of those old-school guys. When they first started coming out with them, I thought, what the heck is this? But what I saw was that the use of body cameras protected that officer or that deputy more often than it caught them doing anything improper. So, there's been a number of times where there've been false complaints made, for whatever reason. They pull the video and it exonerates the officer. There's no faulty memories. There's no foggy recall. It's all there in living color. So, overall, I think it's a good program. It's not a panacea for everything. It doesn't replace good training. It doesn't replace people wanting to have good relations with the community. But on a wing, I think it serves to help the individual deputy more often than it would. And the other thing, too, is that if somebody's doing something wrong, it's pretty dumb if you're doing it on camera, so it's going to curtail any of that behavior there or eliminate it, is what it should be, if they were inclined to do that. If that makes sense.
Thank you. All right. Can you tell us about Senate Bill 178, the new Electronic Communication Privacy Act, and what its impact will be in the sheriff's office?
If we're talking about the same one, it is the getting into the cell phones and those type of things, if I'm talking about the same one. It's just, it won't make the job any more difficult. There's going to be protocol to follow, just like going into a house or whatever else. If you need a warrant for it, you obtain a warrant. Simple as that, you follow the law.
Thank you. Can you explain the new law under Assembly Bill 71, Criminal Justice Reporting, and what the law is and what fiscal impacts it will have on the sheriff's office?
Criminal justice reporting?
Yes. Assembly Bill 71.
I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, can you explain the impacts Prop 47 felony reduction has had on the community in the sheriff's office?
Okay, Prop 47, save schools and neighborhoods. The idea there was to... Well, what they did was they reduced many of the nonviolent felonies. They reduced many of the felony drug possession charges to misdemeanors. The goal being, oh, we'll reduce prison overcrowding and jail overcrowding. Well, I feel it was a false argument because if you're not arresting people, of course, you're going to have a reduction. But it doesn't address the root problem of addressing the crime. If a person in the past was arrested and they had heroin on them, for instance, that was a felony offense, they got booked into jail. Now, it's a misdemeanor offense if they have, quote, "personal use amounts." They're not booked into jail. They're given a citation or whatever. So, there's a lot of crime that's attendant with drug abuse and drug addiction. So, that means that that person is still out there, still committing those crimes. Specifically, here in Calvers County, we haven't seen such an adverse impact as some of the larger counties simply because of the population base there. But it's, it's just not good. It was not a good law. I think it's ineffective. It's putting people out there that in the past, because of their criminal behavior, would have been in custody. They're free to commit more crimes. It's just a cyclic hamster wheel. It doesn't resolve. The other thing is that the cost savings were allegedly going to be passed on to municipalities and counties. And from my understanding, that hasn't happened yet either.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question, Mr. Garahan. Talking about Prop 47, let's talk about how it applies to law enforcement. Would you agree that it takes just the same amount of effort, if not a little bit more, to effectively investigate, issue a citation for a crime under Prop 47, and prosecuting that crime as it would have taken somebody into custody other than the correctional activity? And do you think that's a deterrent to our deputies and law enforcement personnel as far as effectively enforcing those laws as compared to when they could physically arrest? Do you understand the question?
Yes, I do. Well, probable cause is probable cause. So, the investigation is the same and everything else. So, what you're getting is this cost-benefit analysis. Now, getting to the point where it's a physical arrest or it's a citation, that's the same amount of investigation. You have to establish that probable cause for the arrest.
Agreed.
Where the breakdown occurs then is that, okay, there's transport to jail and booking time and everything else there. But the benefit to that is that offender is off the street. They're not out continuing to commit crimes. We issue the citation, we leave, and they're back doing criminal behavior, whether it's drug use or burglaries or whatever else. So, the question is, does that have a detrimental impact on deputies? Yes, okay? Because I'm going to spend, or it potentially can.
I understand.
I'm going to spend a whole lot of time doing something, and we're not really resolving the issue. Everything we do, I like to think, is focused on accomplishing a goal, getting something, okay? So, if we want to reduce crime, it's called incapacitation. That person is locked up until they go to trial and everything else then. They're either in the penal system or they're released at that point. But to have them turn right back around, 15 minutes later, they can break into another business or whatever, simply because they got issued a citation on something that a short time ago was a felony offense. Of course, the potential for having a negative effect is there. The answer to it is good leadership. And you make sure that people understand that we do our jobs right, we do it properly every single time, and we don't take shortcuts because we don't necessarily get the results that we may want, i.e. locking somebody up.
Well, that's what I thought.
Okay. I'm going to bond to to ask this question. I'm going to read it verbatim. Assuming while on duty, you witnessed a clear traffic violation which involved one of your off-duty deputies, would you issue the deputy a citation?
There would be some action taken, okay? And the reason I say that is I'm not sure personally that the head of the department needs to be out enforcing traffic laws. Now, it doesn't mean that they get a free pass. They're actually subject to more sanctions because there can be some administrative action for violations that can occur. So, say this deputy ran a stop sign. They're off-duty, correct? Is that the question?
That's the question.
Okay. Well, I know who they are. Now, stopping them, I don't know if that would be the thing to do. The key point here is it needs to be addressed, whether they get a traffic citation or they get some kind of an Internal Affairs complaint or whatever. You have to address it one way or the other. They don't get a free pass. And I think the sanctions within the department would have more effect. And again, it just kind of goes back to, I don't think that the sheriff necessarily needs to be out making traffic stops. We can resolve the problem without that. Let me just add, when I mention Internal Affairs, you know, that's the term there. There just needs to be some corrective action taken there. So, it doesn't have to be a full-blown investigation or whatever.
I understand. The new medical marijuana state laws, SB 266, AB 243, and SB 643 encourage local agencies to regulate medicinal marijuana in order to secure state permits. Will you, as sheriff, comply with all local laws adopted by the Board of Supervisors in regulating medicinal marijuana and potentially legal marijuana in the future?
Absolutely. My job as a sheriff is to enforce the laws, state law and local ordinances. It's up to the board to create that ordinance, craft a reasonable, legally defensible ordinance that people can follow, to be in compliance with state law, make it clear when they won't be in compliance. It's just a basic cornerstone of law enforcement. You enforce the law. You enforce it fairly, you enforce it equitably. You protect people when they're obeying the law. law, and you investigate, arrest, and assist in the prosecution of lawbreakers.
Thank you. Okay. Do you support Neighborhood Watch groups and feel they help to bring concerned citizens together with law enforcement to make our communities safer?
Yes, I do. I had interaction with community groups and law enforcement, or law enforcement, and Neighborhood Watch when I was a supervisor and a commander in Oakland. It works. And the beauty that we have out here in Oakland, even in some of the most violent neighborhoods in the state, you still had people that were willing to be involved. That's the beauty of cooperation with law enforcement out here, is we have such fertile ground. Most of our citizens want to help law enforcement, they want to be involved with the sheriff's office. So, I look at it as it's our obligation to make sure we're carrying our end of the boat. Make sure that we are out there, we're facilitating meetings, we are listening to people, we're giving them answers to problems, we're working on solutions together. I talked to one sergeant, he said he had been stymied for a number of times trying to get some Neighborhood Watch going, okay? I look at it this way, I would give that sergeant free rein. You line up your meetings, you do what you need to do because the benefit to it, to us, is great, and then you tell me which ones I need to be at. And I say that as a sergeant doesn't need to be beat up by the public out there, that's what the sheriff's job is, to take those shots and answer those hard questions. They'll get the credit for the great job, and I'll take the hits for maybe some shortcomings we have. There's a lady that was a Neighborhood Watch coordinator before, she's retired from the sheriff's offices. She's already approached me, said if you're appointed, would you be interested in bringing me on board as a volunteer, not as a volunteer, but not being paid, to run your Neighborhood Watch program? And before she could finish the question, my answer was yes. She's got experience in it, she's passionate about it, and she can make it work. It'll be a benefit to everybody in the communities.
All right, thank you.
I have a follow-up question. Mr. Garahan, tell me how you feel about a resident deputy program, and should they be continued?
Resident deputy program...
I'm sorry?
I just want to step in. It's the question that we are currently on has to...
Well, let me restructure. Currently, I understand that the resident deputy program is part of the Neighborhood Watch program, at least in my district. Would you continue that practice?
Yeah, but I would change the name. And the reason I would change the name is because my experience, when I worked in Arizona, a resident deputy was the sole law enforcement officer for miles and miles and miles around, okay? What I look at it is, and again, it's maybe just semantics, community service deputy, something along that. But if what you're talking about is to have that go-to guy or girl that's the deputy for that community, absolutely. It goes towards, I talked about how the sheriff needs to be involved, it goes all the way down. People forget, there's two kind of different things here. There's law enforcement, which has to do with just people breaking the law, and then there's what I call policing, which has to do with those quality of life issues that maybe people don't need to be arrested, maybe they just want to vent, maybe they just have a question on how we can do this. And that's where that resident deputy, whatever we end up calling it, is going to be that facilitator for those things. We still get problems solved, but it's not strictly a lock 'em up law enforcement issue.
Okay, final question. What would you communicate to your deputies regarding the Black Lives Matter movement?
It's a group out there, they're exercising their First Amendment rights, they have their opinions on law enforcement, policing. The deputies will have their own opinions on that group, that's irrelevant. When you are on duty, you'll be professional, you'll carry out your duties to the best of your ability, legally, lawfully, morally, ethically, and it's a non-issue. If you carry yourself as a professional, somebody can complain all day long about you or your profession, but it should be water off a duck's back. There's a lot of people out there that are going to complain about law enforcement all day long, they've been doing it for decades, it's not going to stop anytime soon. They just happen to be one of the current ones that are involved with it.
And at the previous candidates in here, was also asked at the end of the, after the 20th question, Debbie asked whether there was anything else that you wanted to share that wasn't covered or asked. Closing statement, so is me.
The answer is yes. Okay, my entire life has been dedicated to policing profession. If I'm appointed, this will allow me to carry on those decades of service to others. Public safety is of great concern to virtually everybody out here, and the office of sheriff is critical. I don't take it lightly. I know that there will be a lot of sleepless nights worrying about things, but I'm up to the challenge. I know I can do the job, and I know I can be successful. I'm the right person for the job. I'm well-qualified, I think everybody has my resume up there. I'm invested in this community, in this entire county, and I have great support throughout the county. If I'm appointed, neither you or our fellow citizens will be disappointed. What I look for is, within a short period of time, my supporters to be saying, see, I knew he could do the job. And then my detractors, if there are any, will be saying, within a short period of time, I was wrong, he is doing a great job for us. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks for stepping up.
Welcome.
Let's take a 10 minutes. We're going to take a 10-minute break. Be back in 10 minutes, okay? You ready, Diane?
I'm ready.
So, we'll begin again. We're going to do one more interview, and then we're going to break for lunch for an hour. Also, I want to remind, or let you folks know, a little bit of housekeeping here. Please don't come in the well area, okay? Because we have a lot of sensitive information up here that cannot be shared with the public. We want to make sure it stays that way. Just letting you know, all this stuff that we're looking at right here is going to be all folded up and given back to our county council. At the end of the day, we won't have access to it anymore after this either. That's the way it should be. So, we want to make very clear that we're very sensitive to that protection, okay? So, we're ready for the next candidate. All right, welcome, Mr. Smith, how are you?
Yeah, very well, Mr. Smith. That was important.
Good. We're going to ask a series of 20 questions that are, were presented by the public, and some of them have been presented by the board. But they're all the same as everybody else gets, so they're very consistent, okay? But for now, maybe you'd like to share a little bit about, something about yourself? Let me get started.
Hi, I'm Larry Blain Smith. I go by Blaine, so please call me Blaine. I was born and raised in the county, spent 14 years in the Marine Corps, and 15 years with the Calveras County Sheriff's Department. I'm excited for this opportunity, I'm excited to be here. Thank you for the time.
So, I've been asking the first question, and today I have, please tell the interview panel about all of your management and executive level experience, and how this experience has prepared you to serve in the role of one of California's 58 sheriffs.
Throughout the Marine Corps, I reached the rank of Gunnery Sergeant. I was meritocracy promoted throughout my 14 years in the Marine Corps. Some of the last assignments I had was as a platoon sergeant and as training chief and operations chief for a battalion. As training operations chief, at the time, I was stationed in Okinawa, Japan, which gave it another complex aspect of being a training operations chief overseas, dealing with distance and other regulations. In those positions, I had to run operations budgets, training budgets on a general staff level, help make plans for not only real world, but also training evolutions in different countries and different contingencies. As working with the sheriff's department in the rank of sergeant, I commanded the bomb team and the hazmat team. During that time, I had to help with budgets for the OES and those individual teams, and again, work on contingencies with other departments, other counties, and the fire services.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Smith, how are you?
Good.
As sheriff of Calveras County, what are your top three priorities and why?
I think one of the top priorities would be building and maintaining good, honest, solid relationships with other county departments and employees. For what I've seen in the past, those relationships have been strained. It seems like that tide has turned the corner. I've been away from the department and specifically working within the county for the past year and a half, but it seems like those things of 10, 15, five years ago, those relationships have become a lot better. But I think it's very important that we work together in the county. It's not one department against another, or singling out one Board of Supervisor against another when it comes to county budgets and things that the sheriff's department would need in the future. One of the main priorities, I think, is understanding Prop 47, its impacts in the community, and trying to maintain the same level of service and protection with that in mind. Prop 47 studies are beginning to show very clearly that it has weakened law enforcement with the reduction in penalties and taking less of a stance on different crimes and punishments that are... It's taken away instead of not to commit certain crimes. And the last, which I think's been struggling at least the last 20 years, are recruiting, retaining good deputies, maintaining and trying to establish an equal pay for deputies within similar counties and positions within the region. It's something that was hard to do prior to the economy going south, and it's something that we have an opportunity to do now that the economy recovers.
What awards or other recognition have you received for your law enforcement work?
Received several letters of recommendation on some of the major incidents, whether it be fires or major investigations, I've been received meritocracy unit awards, awards that the whole unit received together, working on those cases or that incident.
Thank you. What have you done to familiarize yourself with the need of Calveras County and the sheriff's office's ability to fulfill those needs?
The last year and a half, I've worked outside the county, and haven't been in touch with the county and the sheriff's department as much. When this opportunity presented itself, spent a lot of time going back and watching Board of Supervisors videos from meetings, looking at archives on our local newspapers, and talking to community members that I know that try to keep up with things within the county, county politics and the sheriff's department.
As sheriff, you'll be responsible for maintaining partnerships with non-law enforcement agencies or departments throughout the county and state. Please describe what experience you have building relationships with other agencies, and what specific tasks or projects you are directly responsible for within the scope of these duties.
For eight years, I was a member of the department's bomb and hazmat teams. Those teams had the responsibility of covering four counties, Calveras, Samador, Twomey, and Alpine. I regularly responded to and dealt with all the jurisdictions within those four counties. Angels Camp within our own county, and the fire services here, each individual volunteer fire and CDF. Each jurisdiction in Twomey, for example, Sonora PD, Twomey SO, Alpine County, Jackson, Sutter Creek, Ione PD. I regularly met and worked with them regarding calls for service for hazmat and bomb. I knew from experience in the Marine Corps, it was very important to maintain, establish and maintain very good relationships with them, which was easy to do because we already had them. What was the second part of the question?
Please describe what experience you have building relationships with other agencies, and what specific tasks or projects you were directly responsible for within the scope of these duties.
Part of the tasks that I was responsible for was training. With the help of several department members, we established and had a post-certified explosive recognition course. We did that training and coordination throughout the three other counties besides Calveras that we worked with. One of the other tasks that I was tasked with as a young deputy was investigating specific groups related to gangs within the county and within the state. In doing so, I was a founding member of a statewide organization that related to investigating those gangs and disseminating information and coordinating throughout the state.
So, do you feel that a working, healthy relationship exists with the public agencies and departments within the county? And what would you do to improve those relationships?
I left the department about a year and a half ago. A year and a half ago, I think, a lot of those relationships were, had turned the corner and started becoming a lot better within the sheriff's department, the sheriff's admin, and other department heads and county supervisors. I've seen it worse, I've witnessed it being worse. Like I stated, I think it's extremely important to understand that there's not personal agendas. Each department head doesn't have their personal agenda that they've got to drive through. It's something that's got to be built on respect, transparency, commonality of goals. I wouldn't look as the sheriff's department's any better or any worse than any other department. So, the relationships will have to be built. It has to be transparent and very professional, and it's something that I would more likely start on day one if I were appointed as the new sheriff. It'd be something that I'd value quite a bit.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, given the current staffing levels, how would you change or not change the existing beach structure in the county to ensure safe and proper law enforcement performance for public protection and response time?
It's... At times in my career as a sergeant, I was part of investigating and trying to develop new beach structures and develop plans for patrol in order to be more effective throughout the county. In order to intelligently answer that, I would need the data of calls for service, times for responses, and where they are in the county. It takes a lot of research and a lot of development in order to gain the information and be able to make a decision of where best, where's our... Typically, Valley Springs is the highest crime area, the most calls for service in the county. We've tried a couple of things in the past 10, 15 years to try to develop that. I would have to have that information, be able to research that, to honestly make a... recommendation or give input to that.
Please describe your familiarity with the county budget process and specifically what you know about the Sheriff's Office budget.
For the past eight, my last eight years with the department was as sergeant in charge of the Marine Safety Unit. I was introduced in the beginning of that, so I have eight years' experience developing the Marine Safety Budget itself and going through that process within the county and the Sheriff's Department. As we had individuals retire, I became the team leader for the hazmat and the BOM team and had more hands-on with the budget with OES and grants and things like that. So, I've got experience going through that for an eight-year period. I would describe it, in the past, the past couple of years was very frustrating because it seemed like every day we had new rules and we had to change budgets prior to submission. I understand in the last couple of years, it's become much more simple, straightforward. I think it's extremely important to become simple and straightforward. I know there's been battles on the Sheriff's Department getting a budget and the former sheriff's opinion on how he should be able to use that budget. Budgets are tough. I went through the whole period of the economy reductions and reductions in budget of nearly fifty percent. So, I struggled through that and I understood it. As long as the rules of the game doesn't change constantly, it's something that the Sheriff's Department was very well at adapting to and presenting, and we have a great deal of experience doing that. So, I think I could pick up right where I left off when I was with the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you. Okay. Along those same lines, next question, given our budget constraints, how would you stretch our taxpayer dollars and still deter crime?
It's another question that's difficult without looking at line items in a budget to say, "I would cut this, I would save that." When I was in the Marine Safety Budget, I was able to keep the same level of service as that budget decreased. What I did is looked at line by line, what do we absolutely need, what do we don't need? At the end of the year, I'd save as much as I can. At the end of the year, I'd buy expendable items that I could use in that next year, which would be saving me money into that next year's budget so I could maintain that labor cost, that cost of having people out on the lakes and on patrol. The Sheriff's Department budget is incredibly complex with all the sub-units that we have. So, to make, again, to make an intelligent answer about that, I'd have to look at line by line and what we have and what we're spending, look at consumables, and honestly, look at, do we need to do this and what do we need to do to maintain that level of service?
All right, thank you. Explain your program to retain and hire deputies should additional resources and funding become available.
I believe we still lost our academy that was in Stanislaus County. That was our main source. I take, as a Marine, I was a Marine recruiter, and as a Marine recruiter, I took a short and long-term approach to that. I developed young Marines that were fifteen, sixteen, that walked in my office and say they wanted to be a Marine. Instead of telling them to go away, come back when you're seventeen, eighteen, we developed those, coming each month to our monthly meetings. Let's learn, you know, if you're not qualified, if you are qualified, these are the things you need to maintain. I think we'd have to bolster our Explorer Program and our ROTC Program because the best loyal candidates we're going to find are going to be born and raised or have lived in Calaveras County a long time. Learning curve wouldn't be as great in getting to know the county, getting to know people in the county, getting to know deal with issues in the county. That would be a long-term development of new deputies. A short-term development would be, we have very capable deputies and sergeants and corporals that know how to recruit. Lack of a better word, they know how to sell the county because the county sells itself. We're one of the most beautiful, diverse counties in the state of California. Going to those academies and recruiting, there's ebbs and tides depending on what retirement does in Calvers. Sometimes there's a lot of jobs in law enforcement, sometimes there's not. Currently, I think it's kind of in the middle. We've got to attract good candidates, diverse candidates, look at veterans, look at non-veterans, keep our recruitment open, and the last thing is do our best to make our pay and benefits at least competitive with other counties and jurisdictions that are similar to ours.
What do you feel is the sheriff's role within the community and its organizations?
Could you define organizations?
Within the community and its organizations, I'm going to say something like perhaps the Rotary as an example.
During the selection committee or ranking committee, they ask about community involvement. My community involvement has been as a coach, as a mentor. I've raised five kids from twenty-two, and my youngest is eight. That's what's important to me is my family. So, that's been my community involvement up until this point. Having been a member of the DSA and knowing and being good friends with past sheriffs, I know that they go to Rotary meetings, they go to veterans' meetings, they go to things like that. That's something that I think's important, knowing what the business is and what the leaders in the community see, hear, and feel. So, I think being in touch with that throughout the county is definitely a line of communication. But having coached and having sat on the sidelines to school events and things like that, I think that's equally as important. I've learned a lot sitting on the sideline, watching a soccer game or at a coaches' meeting that I have, and I have attended very few Rotary meetings and veterans' meetings also, and you see a lot of the same people. So, I think it's very important, but I don't think it's the only way to stay in touch with our community.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, will you follow state law in connecting, connection with granting or denying concealed carry permits?
The question was, would I follow state law?
That's correct. Would you follow state law in connection with granting or denying concealed carry permits?
I'd absolutely follow state law unless, I almost feel like this is a trick question, that I don't know something out there that I'm ignorant to, but absolutely, I would have to, I'd be forced to follow state law. Yes.
I don't think it was a trick question.
No.
It kind of seems like it.
It seems like a very simple question.
Believe it or not. You're kind of waiting for the other shoe to dry. Are you in favor of deputies wearing body cameras?
I've watched this national debate, and I have for quite some time. In the later parts of my Marine Corps career, they started developing body cameras also for a lot of the same reasons, in Iraq and Afghanistan and deployments like that. Am I in favor of it? Yes. Do I think it's necessary in Calaveras County? Not so much. It's a national debate about addressing law enforcement officers' behavior. I haven't seen our behavior locally to be of a concern or in question like that. I'd absolutely be for it or approve it or think it's a good idea. It's just, again, it's another expense. Do we need to buy that technology and use it? What benefit are we getting from it? So, absolutely, I'd be in favor of it. Deputies in this county have absolutely nothing to hide, and it would call minds that think they do.
Thank you. Okay. Can you tell us about Senate Bill 178, the New Electronic Communication Privacy Act, and what its impact will be on the Sheriff's Office?
In multiple hours of research, I didn't come across that Senate bill, so I'm not informed on what it proposes or how it would affect the Sheriff's Department or county.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I get to ask you another one about another bill. Can you explain the new law under Assembly Bill 71, Criminal Justice Reporting, and what the law is and what fiscal impacts it will have on the Sheriff's Office?
Unfortunately, I was stuck in the three hundred pages of Title 15, but I did come across that and breezed over it. If I know it correctly, it changes, we have uniform crime reports that go up to the federal level. It changes and mandates certain specific crimes and how they're reported within the state level. It'd probably be a minimal cost. Not knowing a lot about that bill, like I said, I breezed over it. I think it would be a minimal administrative cost. I didn't come across any administrative fees or specific systems that we had to prescribe to or sign up for in order to report certain information, so I think it would be minimal. It'd be something I'd have to study some more.
Can you explain what impacts Proposition 47, felony reduction, has had on the community and the Sheriff's Office?
This is something that I've been very interested in from the time it passed. A lot of people predicted what may or may not happen, and studies are becoming more conclusive and showing that there is rise in crime throughout a lot of jurisdictions within the state. I don't know specific numbers within the communities or within the county itself, what kind of rise in crime we've seen. You look through history, and we've had swings in the criminal justice system like Prop 47 and Prop 109 and things that become, make penalties and incarceration times less, and we've become more rehabilitative. We've seen that within the past few years. I think it's a natural pendulum that'll swing back. It's something that we have to look at very seriously, not only within the Sheriff's Department, because we'll still arrest on crimes no matter what, if they're called a misdemeanor or felony. We're still going to investigate and arrest on. I think we have to really build and look at the relationship the Sheriff's Department, the DA's office, and probation has, and what are we going to do now? Traditionally, maybe that crime will get pled out and a very lenient sentence or probation term may be imposed. I think it's time where we need to tighten the straps on that and prosecute crimes that haven't been prosecuted before because they were just a misdemeanor. We've got to address it. Studies show that it has a direct correlation to the increase in crime. So, I think a lot of that is honestly out of the Sheriff's Department's hands. We're still going to arrest for it. We've got to wait for the DA and the criminal justice system to impose that sentence, which the sheriff will take custody while they're in our jail. But it's going to be, going to have to be a relationship between the DA's office probation and the Sheriff's Department in order to adjust for that leniency.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, the new medical marijuana state laws, SB 266, AV 243, and SB 2, I'm sorry, 643, encourage local agencies to regulate medicinal marijuana in order to secure state permits. Will you, as sheriff, comply with all local laws adopted by the Board of Supervisors in regulating medical marijuana and potentially legal marijuana in the future?
Working in consort with the Board of Supervisors, they may get county ordinances, then as we are directed, we, the Sheriff's Department, would enforce those laws.
Thank you. Do you support Neighborhood Watch groups and feel they help to bring concerned citizens together with law enforcement to make our communities safer?
Absolutely, one hundred percent. My five years on patrol, I enjoyed graveyards in West Point and in Valley Springs areas. Neighborhood Watch was just key. Living in a rural community, the Sheriff's Department can't see everything. We can't patrol every road. We're understaffed. If we have the eyes and ears of the community and the trust, it's personally helped me send individuals to prison with testimony from Neighborhood Watch individuals, and it's huge, it's key in a rural county like ours.
Thank you. Assuming while on duty, you witnessed a clear traffic violation, was involved one of your off-duty sheriff deputies. Would you issue that deputy a traffic citation?
At that point, there would be a little conflict. I'd have to conduct, in my opinion, conduct an internal affairs investigation or use department discipline rather than a vehicle code violation. Being a subordinate, there's a lot of policies within the department that would dictate on how to move forward or something like that. Would it be something that I, depending on the violation, if there was safety or life or limb, we'd definitely get an immediate reprimand, but I can't say that I would issue them a vehicle code citation. I'd have to look at policy and bringing them into disciplinary aspects of the department itself.
What would you communicate to your deputies regarding the Black Lives Matter movement?
Could you read that one more time?
What would you communicate to your deputies regarding the Black Lives Matter movement?
Honestly, I think that's a tough question. Are they protesting, or are they setting up shop in the county? Does it come up in conversation? I'd need some more clarification. I can answer that without more clarification.
Okay, so, like any other movement, there's, people are, have the right to free speech and all of that, right?
Yes.
So, this, you know, this is another group that has those same rights, and so how would you communicate to your deputies about this?
By clarifying that, you kind of answered it for me. They're an organization that believes in something. Being a former Marine, I understand... Being a former Marine, I understand completely and value the constitutional rights we have in this country. Being in 32 different countries, I've seen a lot where you don't have that. So, as frustrating, frustrating as it might be, something that you may personally disagree with, individuals and, and different organizations can protest and speak their mind. It would be unlike any other organization that we deal with or would deal with. We'll make, ensure that they are exercising that constitutional right in a legal manner. We protect them if need be while they're doing that in a legal manner. But at the same time, we'd make sure that they're not violating law either.
All right. And that was the 20th question and you get a little bonus question here, okay? Is there anything else that you think we should have covered or that you would like to share and wasn't asked?
Well, that's tough because, believe it or not, this is the first time that I've had some interviews for, for appointment of sheriff. So, I didn't know what to expect.
And almost everybody else in the whole country.
I did a lot of studying, looked, tried to look up and update myself on all the current legislation. I got stuck on Title 15 for quite some time of 300 pages. Tried to look at a history of the county and things like that. So, I, it's tough. You've got a whole county that has waited for a certain amount of time in a situ, that's put, the county government's been put in a situation that they never have before. It's tough. You're not going to have everybody that's happy. Due to a very unfortunate incident, you have five men within this county that are very well-qualified. Certain places I stand apart, I was born and raised in this county. I've got a lot of family, a lot of friends, a lot of ties to this county. I've seen this county develop from a town of 500 in Valley Springs to the 7,500 that it is now. Murphy's grow into a town that it has now. I've always paid attention and voted when I could to issues within this county. I spent my time in the Marine Corps, went to some of the toughest schools that they had to offer, was a reconnaissance Marine because I enjoyed those challenges. I've gotten thousands hours of leadership. I pride myself on leadership and management. And I, and the natural progression for me leaving the Marine Corps was to go into law enforcement. I was lucky enough to be blessed to come back home to where I was born and raised. It is an opportunity that obviously comes around once in a lifetime. So, I'm, I'm very excited. Didn't know what to expect. I asked myself all kinds of questions that I thought would be asked of the public and by, and of the board and the ranking committee. So, there's, there's nothing else that I think hasn't been covered.
So, thank you very much for stepping up to take on this challenge and we appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, we're going to go ahead and break for lunch and we'll be back at 1:15.